Good evening and welcome to the October 20, I'm sorry, October 17th, 2024 Meeting of the Media Borough Council. We're going to begin this evening with a very special recognition. And I'd like to ask that our visitors listen as we join in sharing accolades for our outgoing Police Chief Matt Egan. And I will warn you, Chief, this was written by a former journalist and your son. So here we go. I'm not saying which one, but I think he could probably figure it out. It all started 35 years ago when former Chief Marty Wasinic received a letter from a Temple University graduate expressing his interest to serve as a police officer with the Media Borough Police Department. Fast forward to today, and we now find past and present members of the Media Police Department, along with family and friends and borough officials, past and present, who have all gathered here to recognize and celebrate Chief Matthew Egan on his upcoming retirement at the end of this month. Chief Egan has an exemplary resume and a long list of accomplishments. He is a 1984 Bonner grad, he holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Temple University, and he graduated from the Pennsylvania Municipal Police Academy in 1989. Chief Egan began his full-time tenure with the Media Police Department in August of 1990. He was promoted to Sergeant in December of 2000, spending over 20 years as street supervisor until he was promoted to the Lieutenant's position in 2021. He took over as Chief of Police in August 2022. Chief Egan has made a noticeable positive impact on the department during his time on patrol. He showed a particular emphasis on curbing drunk driving, receiving accommodations and recognition from Mothers Against Drunk Driving for his work in that area. He was an early champion of the change over to the 12-hour shift, which significantly benefited officers' quality of life. In addition, he was a founding member of the department's Bike Patrol Unit and an FOP representative. Notably, Chief Egan was the driving force behind the department receiving accreditation status from the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission in August of 2023, a status which all who are a part of this borough can and do take pride in. Chief Egan has a list of citations and commendations too numerous to give here today, but of all his work accomplishments, we all know Chief Egan to be a family man through and through. He is one of 11 siblings, he has been married for 27 years to his wife Mary, and is the proud father of six children and one big-eared spotted dog. The chief has crisscrossed the United States with family in Tohoe to visit countless national parks, and he will undoubtedly continue his travels now that he will have a bit more time on his hands. On behalf of the Media Borough Council, I wish to present a small token of appreciation for more than three decades of outstanding service and dedication to Media Borough. Thank you, Chief Egan. We all wish you the best in your retirement.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's truly an honor and a privilege to work with the Media Police Department. I want to thank the mayor and council for giving me that opportunity, past and present members of the council for supporting the Media Police in our endeavors. It's been a long but short term for me, and my mother always said that the days are long, but the years are short, and I can't believe I'm already retiring. But I do appreciate the chance to work with the best police department in Delaware County. We have a number of new officers today, and I think going forward that the Media Borough residents will definitely, definitely should feel secure in that they have some excellent, excellent officers to continue to keep them safe. I want to thank my wife and my kids for allowing me to do this job for so long and missing all the different events we've had over the years, including school events and when I take overtime or so. It's been a struggle for them, too, I'm sure, but I want to thank them. So my wife Mary, I would name my kids, but I can't get through it without screwing you up. I also want to introduce my mother here, who came with my sister. My mother, my mother's having her 98th birthday this week, so. She wanted to join us because I'm her favorite of the 11. I'd like to thank the officers of the Media Police Department for all their hard work and effort and friendship. I definitely appreciate it. They said it's been a fun 35, I'm in my 35th year, so it's been a fun time, and don't regret working with any of you. I appreciate all your help. I would again name all you, but I can't get through those names either. My mentor, Chief Wasinic, I appreciate him coming out here today, and a few of the other I learned a lot from him and from all of you, and hopefully I'll continue to learn from all of you anyway. And then what we often don't do is recognize the other people that really help us along the way. So I want to say thank you to Debbie, our administrative assistant. The turnkeys, the meter attendants, the office staff up in the borough, Brittany Foreman, the borough manager and her staff have been always helpful, and if they don't help us out, then things come to a grind, and they've been extremely helpful. So I appreciate that. And just thank you for all your efforts and for giving me this gift. It's bittersweet. I'm happy to retire, but I'm also not happy that I have to leave these great friends and coworkers. So thank you.
Thank you again for your service, Chief, and thank you all for coming out tonight to honor such a terrific service to our community. I'll give it a couple moments if the officers wanted to step out and take some pictures or, you know. You can stay, you're welcome to stay. We have a lot of exciting things on the agenda, lots of approval of things. Yes, sir.
Are you going to stay for public comment?
Absolutely. That would be wonderful. Before we begin the formal business of tonight's meeting, I wanted to take a brief moment to address some of the events in our community recently. With a presidential election less than 20 days away, emotions are running high. I encourage borough residents to stand up for what they believe in without violating the safety or privacy rights of others. There is no place in Media Borough for intimidation, theft, or other malfeasance in response to perceived or actual political disagreement. Let's all be kind to one another in the waning days of this election season. The last day to register to vote in Pennsylvania is this coming Monday, October 21st. I encourage all residents in the borough to exercise their franchise in a manner consistent with our proud status as everybody's hometown. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We'll begin with the September 5th, 2024 Workshop Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the September 5th, 2024 Workshop Meeting Minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, we have the minutes of the September 19th, 2024 Council Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the September 19th, 2024 Council Meeting Minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We now have our opportunity, the first of two, for public comment and privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to address council, please step up to the microphone, which will shortly be located over there. We also have an opportunity for people to provide public comment via email at comments@mediaborough.com. Ms. Repino, do we have any comments via email?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone present who would like to speak, feel free to step to the microphone.
Hi.
We do need your name and address for records.
Cheryl Thatch, 300 Meeting House Lane, Media, PA. So I was requested to come to this meeting after my October 1st meeting for a fence permit, so I'm not quite sure how you want me to proceed. Do you have the paperwork from the original meeting?
We do. The item will be coming up for a vote during my report later in the meeting. If there's comments that you would like to make about this, I was not at workshop meeting, but I understand there was some concern about the hardship and the issues that were raised at Planning Commission. I was not able to explain them, but having you here would allow you to explain what it is that you're seeking and why it is important to you.
Okay, so I did go through the PA code for hardship, and I have paperwork here with my descriptions of how I meet the hardship requirements. Do you want me to proceed or not later in the meeting?
That would be fine. You can proceed now.
Okay. May I come forward?
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you. We'll have Brittany end it out. Ms. Foreman.
I just printed again my letters of my neighbors. And this is the original, and this is the PA code. Well, these are all, I can just give you a whole panel, but most of it's what I had in the other meeting, that they asked me to narrow down my options to one option for the fence instead of two and be more clear. So that's what I tried to do in the new paperwork. I'm starting on the recording.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We will have more discussion later in the meeting.
Okay.
And if you would care to speak at that time, Ms. Foreman, is that appropriate? I think that would be fine. If questions are raised by council members, we will certainly ask for your response.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for not being at that meeting to speak more for what happened at the commission, but it was a holiday for me. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Borough Manager's Report. Ms. Foreman.
Good evening, and I do not have a report this evening, so I'll keep it very brief. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions for our manager? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Borough Engineers' Report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few updates on some capital projects. The contractor has returned to Plum Street. Work has been moving forward very positively over the last couple of days. The weather has been cooperating, and there's been a significant amount of work that are the really major milestones that have either been crossed or worked through in the field. So again, after some challenges that we discovered and some shuffling of the plans a little bit, I'm once again feeling confident about the success of this project and moving forward. So I think the contractor has good direction. We've gotten good feedback from our design team, so we're moving forward with that project. Again, I can't emphasize enough the big thanks for the affected business owners, and again, also to really emphasize to support the businesses that are open during construction. Again, it's been a lot of challenge, it's been a lot of hardship on the entire community, but especially those businesses that are affected. So big thanks to everybody who's been patient with us on that one. At the September 19th meeting, the council approved the contract for the Philip Green improvements. I'm delighted to say that that contractor broke ground, so we moved very, very quickly to have the pre-construction meeting, moved through the paperwork for the contract, and then the contractor broke ground on Monday. A significant portion of the sidewalk is already in. The two beautiful sycamores have been exposed. We've been working with our consultant NV5. We've been working with a certified tree arborist who's given us some direction about the protection and great care that we're taking with those trees, about all the trees in the project, but especially those two giant sycamores. And if you haven't had the opportunity to drive by it, it is really turning into a very picturesque part of town. I mean, it is, those trees will be an iconic, they have been iconic, but they will be a really beautified iconic portion of our town. It looks terrific. So hats off to the design team and hats off to the contractor who's been great to work with. They would anticipate that that project will be substantially completed by the end of October. So they're moving at a clip. Great news. And then lastly, at the last meeting, I think, or pardon me, I think tonight we have on the agenda the approval of the road program. So that will be Steve Kroll and his team at AF Damon. They have done workforce in the past, very credible contractor, they have been efficient, so we're looking forward to a successful road program for those streets that are affected. So unless there's any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just have one question. Does anyone have a question for our engineer before I go? Just one question about the Plum Street timing. Are we still on target for the end of November?
I feel confident if there are no further delays, at the rate at which the contractor has been moving and the additional support that he's brought in, again, I certainly don't want to pin myself down to a definite, but I'm feeling confident that he's back on schedule. So it may be that substantial completion will happen by the end of November, but some final elements may not take place until spring.
Understood.
But realistically, I'm delighted to see how fast things have been moving. So there were major excavations, and again, there are several of them that are now completed. So with that major surgery behind us, we're into a lot, there's still work to be done, but we're making great progress.
Wonderful. And again, I encourage people to patronize the businesses that are impacted, and correct me if I missed one, Cafe Isla, Jaco Taco Deals, and there is a yoga studio, Sarva Yoga as well. So please, take time out, visit, have a great cup of coffee. They are accessible. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment that I have heard some very positive feedback regarding Philip Green and the fact that neighbors are commenting that it is going to look really nice and be a nice addition. So, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to our Solicitors' Report. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Thank you. Now we move on to a very exciting part of the evening. We have several proclamations to share, and I will turn things over to our mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the first proclamation is to the, is recognizing Christ Church 170th anniversary. Now.
We have visitors from the.
Oh, you do? Oh, come on up. Should I be doing this over there? Or do you want to reach over the table?
Move the mic over this way.
You want to move the mic back here?
You're going to remember every word, right? You're going to remember every word, right? Okay. Borough Council Proclamation 2024, the fourth one we've had this year. Recognizing Christ Church's 170th anniversary. Whereas Christ Church was incorporated in the parish in August 1954, and 18. And convenience to the Episcopal Diocese of Pennsylvania in May 1857. And whereas during the early years, services were conducted by visiting priests in media at the Delaware County Courthouse, Methodist Chapel, and Christ Church, and on Orange Street, the cornerstone laid in 1858, and the church consecrated, yeah, in 1960. So I'm not going to go through it all, but congratulations and thank you for coming tonight. Please say a few words.
Thank you to the council, to the mayor. Christ Episcopal Church has been part of the community nearly since its founding, and we're very proud to continue serving in media.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go to the mayor's police report, I wanted to make an announcement about another proclamation that is five years old in 2019. And it's fitting, I think, that former President Brian Hall is here, along with Kevin, who also served on council at that time. A friendship agreement was approved in 2019 between the cities of Bosaong, Korea, and Media Borough. And the proclamation was approved, there were intentions of having residents of the Korean delegation come visit us, then the pandemic happened. So it was finally able to be put together, and there will be a celebration next week at 2:00 on the steps of the courthouse. There'll be a formal signing of a friendship agreement between both municipalities. I will be there, the mayor will be there, and several council members have told me they will be there as well. So it's going to be a very exciting and, I think, a big deal, frankly, that we are making this sister agreement with Bosaong, Korea. It's a city as well as a province. I did some research into it to find out a little bit about it, and they will share information more at that time. So please, at 2:00, if you're available, on Thursday, October 24th, we will be at the courthouse for a ceremony where I think Mr. Hall will be present, I'll be there. We'll meet some of the dignitaries from Korea as well as representatives of the Jason House. You know, Korea and history has a tremendous stake here in the borough. Mayor McMahon served during the Korean conflict.
Whoa.
Yeah? Didn't you tell me?
No, that was Vietnam.
I'm sorry.
Not that old.
Were you in Korea?
No, I was with them in Vietnam, Koreans. You were part of my.
The mayor was in Vietnam with Korean citizens. You got to be clear about that. My father served in the Korean conflict, so, in any case, thank you, Mayor.
That's all right.
Sorry about that. I didn't mean to make.
I'm a lot younger.
Yeah, I got you, I got you. So anyway, that will be coming up next Thursday, and I hope that many of you will be able to join us as well. And I will turn it back to the mayor for the police report.
Okay, the police report this month was pretty high, 633. So I'll just read a couple of them that are of interest. Domestic, eight. Information, 39. And some of them were. Public drunkenness, I can't say that word, thank God, two. Motor vehicle violations, 20. Motor vehicle warnings, 37. Traffic accidents, 29. And unwanted persons, six. It goes on and on, but 633 is pretty high. So police were very busy this past month, so that's that. What else do I have?
I think that's it.
That's it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any questions for the mayor? Hearing none. It's almost time to move on to the council committee reports. I did want to also note that this past weekend, the mayor and I, and several council members and Brittany and some others were able to just attend an absolutely wonderful event, the Media Fellowship House's Jubilee, their 80th anniversary celebration. Amy Comarnicki, the director of the Fellowship House, put together a wonderful program. There's a beautiful mural. They honored their two founding members, and the children and descendants of those two women were on hand, including Bill Whitaker, who grew up in media, is now on 60 Minutes on CBS. And it was just a really wonderful event. I just wanted to note that that had happened last week. We'll now move on to our council committee reports. We'll begin with the Transportation Committee, Mr. Herman, councilperson Trey Herman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have my report tonight.
That was quick. Any questions for council member Trey Herman? Hearing none. We'll move on to properties and public works. Our council member, Ms. Joy Washington, Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no liaison announcements tonight. The only item of business for me is to, is for us to accept the bid for the 2024 Road Program from AF Damon Company, Inc., in the amount of $118,906.80. And I believe Kevin Mattson included this in his report. Yeah, and I'm offering this up in the form of a motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion of the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the bid for the 2024 Road Program from AF Damon Company, Incorporated, in the amount of $118,906.80, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for council member Washington? Hearing none. We'll move on to Finance and Media Business Authority, to our Vice President, Elizabeth Romaine. Ms. Romaine.
Thank you, President Pickhoff. Just a few liaison announcements from me. One, just wanted to thank everyone on behalf of the Media Business Authority for a really successful ball festival event a couple of weekends ago. If you got a chance to go out, the weather was perfect, it was an Eagles' bye, the streets were really packed, it was really lovely, the vendors are happy, the attendees are happy. Just another really great signature event for our borough. So thank you to everyone who participated and was able to support that. Right now, the MBA is really active on solidifying plans for celebrations around the holidays, again, to attract visitors to our downtown district for holiday shopping and dining and other services that are provided. So please keep media in mind in our downtown district when you're making those holiday decisions. And then the Finance Committee is actively working on a draft budget proposal, so I know I said this again, but if you see Brittany or John in the Finance Department, please give them a high five or offer to get them a coffee. It is a lot of work to make all the numbers kind of happen behind the scenes, so really appreciative of their work. And, you know, to quote Brittany, budgeting is fun. Budgeting is fun. It's going to be on the T-shirt. It's actually going to be my Christmas present to her. The first item on my agenda, do we, we don't have to vote on this, correct? We don't usually vote on it. I just want to verify, I should have asked this earlier today, but in the past, we've not voted on it.
On the parking? I think you should vote, I think you should vote on it.
Okay, so the motion is to approve a request?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just to give a little bit of background, traditionally and historically, we have offered free parking in the Baltimore Avenue Garage, basically between Black Friday and New Year's Day, as a way to attract people to our downtown area. We've done this as long as I can, I'm aware of. Every other parking spot in the borough is still enforced according to the current parking fees and structure and everything like that, but the garage is free during that time, during that time period. So I make a motion to approve the request from the Media Business Authority to offer complimentary parking in the Baltimore Avenue Garage, November 28th, 2024, through January 1st, 2025.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion of the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the request from the Media Business Authority to offer complimentary parking in the Baltimore Avenue Garage from November 28th, 2024, through January 1st, 2025, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
My next agenda item is about the unified fee schedule, and I want to talk a little bit about this, give a little background before I make the formal motion. The Unified Fee Schedule Project is really an initiative that's aimed at improving transparency and efficiency on how we manage fees within our borough. So the project really has two main purposes. First, it seeks to consolidate all of the borough's fees into one comprehensive location. Currently, these fees are scattered throughout various sections of code, which quite honestly can be confusing and time-consuming for residents and businesses to navigate. By bringing them together into a unified fee schedule, we can make this information just more accessible and more straightforward. Second, this project allows us to update fees that in many cases haven't even been touched or revised in decades, and we want to ensure that our fee structure is fair, competitive, and reflective of current trends. So this initiative began a couple of years ago, and I'm pleased to report that we've made significant progress. Borough staff has conducted extensive research comparing our fees with those of neighboring municipalities, and this helped us really understand how the current fees stack up and highlight where there might be some changes that are warranted and adjustments. So as you may expect, given the time that has passed since the last updates, which again has been several decades in some cases, we found that many of our fees are considerably lower than those of our surrounding towns. And consequently, we're recommending a number of increases, especially in areas where our current fees are far below average. And in some cases, some of the work that the borough does actually does happen at a loss to the borough. So I just wanted to give a few examples of where there are some increases as part of this proposal, as they could have an impact on our residents and businesses. So for example, for building permits, we're proposing an increase in the base fee from $30 to $50. However, there will be no change in the incremental fee structure. For certificates of occupancy, the base fee is proposed to increase from $30 to $100. For general parking permits, the cost for a 12-month parking permit we're proposing would increase from $300 to $400, and increases would be applied to the three-month and monthly permits as well. For commercial trash collection, we're recommending an increase from $250 annually to $350. For business license fees, the proposed increase is from $50 to $100. And really, these changes will help us align with neighboring municipalities while generating necessary, you know, revenue to support borough services. It is worth mentioning that the revised schedule has been reviewed by our solicitor, and he has confirmed that the schedule only needs to be adopted by resolution, making the approval process a little bit more straightforward. So, you know, overall, I really want to emphasize that the Unified Fee Schedule is a step forward in creating just a clearer and fairer and more sustainable fee structure for us and for our revenues moving forward. So with all that said, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2024-50 in establishing a unified fee schedule.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded multiple times. Is there any discussion in the matter?
Just want to bring one piece of clarity, that it would be effective as of January 1st.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Great.
I do have one question. When will this then be reviewed again, and do you anticipate additional updates and increases?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. You know, I think the Finance Committee and borough staff is committed to continuing to research, you know, annually or maybe ever two years. Again, just to make sure we're competitive, but also really looking at the backend, like what is the actual cost to issue these permits? What's the cost in staff time, et cetera? So to be quite honest, I can't, we haven't necessarily decided what next steps are and have not like written down that process, but knowing that some of these things haven't been looked at in decades, I think it really makes sense for us to kind of put something on our calendar for the future and stick to it for sure. But I would not anticipate any additional increases in the immediate, you know, time because we've done the work now.
I agree with everything she just said. I would recommend like a three to five-year schedule for viewing of the fees, yeah, just, yeah.
Great.
Because our own costs of doing business are not going to change that frequently between one and two years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? It's good, thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-50, establishing a unified fee schedule, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And for the last item on my agenda is the ratification of the payment of bills for September. For the General Fund, the amount is $329,867.65. For the Recreation Fund, $1,660.21. For Liquid Fuels Fund, zero. And for the Capital Fund, $68,044.78. For a total of $399,572.64. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying the payment of bills for September in the total amount of $399,572.64, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Vice President Romaine? Hearing none, I will move on to my report. I will hand this over to you for the time being. Community Development, Planning, and Zoning Hearing Board. My liaison announcement is simply that the zoning hearing board will meet this next week on the 24th, and that, you know, brings me to the number one issue here, which is the zoning variance for 300 Meeting House Lane. And again, thank you for providing the information. Just to go back a little bit, the Planning Commission met, I believe it was October 1st or 2nd, you know, and met to discuss this and met with the homeowner, and did not have any significant concerns about this variance. I do understand at the workshop a couple of evenings later, there were some issues that were raised, which is why we invited the homeowner to be here tonight. So just so that everybody understands, I am not planning to bring forth a motion to send our solicitor to zoning hearing board next week. If another council member wishes to do so, you may do that. But my take is that the Planning Commission was in full support of this without sending the solicitor. I know there were some issues that we can discuss and share, and if council votes to send the solicitor, that would be absolutely fine. But I wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to speak and that we had the homeowner here to share perspective and information about what was going on. Again, the only thing that we would need to do is to send our solicitor to oppose. We could vote to send the solicitor to support, which is rare, or we can do nothing at all, which simply means that Planning Commission's recommendation would go to zoning hearing board, and they will have the ultimate say next week. So if there's anyone that would care to discuss that, feel free to.
I mean, I think I can jump in, you know, having chaired the workshop meeting. We certainly respect the recommendation. I think the way it was explained, it was a little hard for us to understand what the actual hardships were, and there were a couple of questions around like increased traffic, but like since when? Like since the pandemic, since 1980? Like when, like what exactly are the hardships there, and like what's the data points? And I think there were a couple of questions around like the longevity of how long the homeowner had been in that, in that house, which just peering over your shoulder, looking at that letter, it looks like some of that was clarified. That just wasn't necessarily information that we had at our fingertips at workshops. So certainly, any other council member, jump in. So it's not necessarily that we oppose the recommendation, we just wanted some clarity to feel a little bit more confident in supporting that.
Absolutely. And, you know, the one thing that was brought up during Planning Commission, and similar to 435 West Jefferson, is that the one? That the property, the way that the property sits is actually somewhat of a hardship in that there's two yards, Jim, you're probably better at this than I, and there's a fence that would have to cut through to give more land for the homeowner to have a property, and the concern of a dog that had run out, gotten hit on Providence, and small children that are now living near the property, there's a very strong concern about the safety on that road. Is there anything else? Jim?
This is some subject--
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. It's a very unique plot, and, you know, the understanding from our solicitor is that that, you know, that automatically, you know, would be something that would be creating hardship because that's how it's built. The other hardships are outlined here specifically in the letter that was shared with us. Everybody should have it, if not--
No, I think that might be the only copy.
Oh, okay, I'll pass it around. But if you want to take a look at it, and there's also documentation here of some other properties in the borough that have fences that are this high, you know, that the homeowner provided to us as well. Yeah, it'll take a few moments to look at it. So I mean, Vice President Romaine, did you, did we want to ask the homeowner to share that information that was sought?
I think we can get a sense of counsel if we want to continue the discussion or not.
Sure.
Because we may not have to. I think this does provide a little bit of clarity.
The only concern I had was if it was tall enough that it obstructs somebody's view of coming down Meeting House, but I don't think that's the case because we were looking at like Google Maps and couldn't really figure out where exactly it was, but--
Yeah, that's, I think it's this one, because it looks like it's, that's not--
That's not the case. That was the only concern I had, that if it was far enough in, you wouldn't be able to see--
Ah, I see, coming down Meeting House.
Coming down Providence if you were going to Meeting House, but it sounds like that's not going to be an issue, so I'm fine.
And that was pretty much my concern as well, so.
Yeah, if there's no issues with either the pedestrians or the traffic turning left or turning into Meeting House, then I don't have a problem.
Okay.
So we may not have to--
Yes, so we can just let it go, and we will let zoning take a look.
Speak.
Yeah, we'll let zoning take a look at it next week. We're not going to oppose unless someone wishes to make that motion.
Okay.
I think that's probably not a bad idea, at least in case questions come up that they have, I think it's probably a good idea. They will meet in this room at 7:30, I think. Is that their time? 7:00 PM, 7:00 PM in the same room here. Okay.
Just to clarify, you had a couple of questions on that. I've been in that house since 1999, and traffic has increased drastically, and I didn't have grandchildren then, and now I have two grandchildren that live with me, one who has just turned three, and he's flying. My last plane, I don't know, is on the outhead. It's not, I mean, media safe, but no community safe. I mean, you don't let a child outside that gate play by himself, even though it's fenced in. And like I said, I lost a Yorkie to the fence, so just--
Yeah, and believe me, like we're very, just to clarify, like we're very sympathetic, or at least speaking for myself, we're very sympathetic on the challenges to safety, you know, for pets, and I just don't think that was necessarily communicated to us on like what changed to make this a hardship now, and it wasn't previous. Like that's where I think we were just missing a few data points and a little bit of color around, around, you know, the application.
And it's not just, traffic normally can stop right in front of our place, some 3:00 o'clock until, you know, 5:00, off and on. And the speed limit on Providence Road might be 35, but people don't travel 35, and they're flying down it. Meeting House Lane is just as dangerous. I don't know how many times they've almost got pits coming out of their driveway because they fly over the hill. You know, I'd love to have a speed bump there or something--
Yeah.
That's upper prov.
Airborne.
This might, I mean--
That's upper Providence.
We do have some plans, according to the Traffic Plan, Calming Plan, that do address some of the traffic and some of the speeding on Providence Road, and we were just talking about these, would it be next year or 20, it'd be 2026 that we're penciling in? So like, this is not the point, but just sort of more broadly, when it's, with concerns with the, with the traffic, I'm sorry, I'm just--
No, no, exactly.
When we were looking at the capital budget plan, so that's why it's top of mind, there are a couple of things that are on the plans that we'll implement that will hopefully help with some of the safety on Providence Road for sure.
Great. Well, hearing nobody saying anything, I will just move on then to item number three, which is ordinance 1169 of 2024. This is to vacate the alley between East Second Street and Emerald Street. And again, this was Situation Council got this request. We asked for feedback from all of the properties that were affected and the neighbors, and we received that, and I believe this has been advertised, and we're here to just approve it this evening. So I will make that in the form of a motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of ordinance 1169 of 2024, vacating alley between East Second Street and Emerald Street, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. My last item, and I need some advice here from the solicitor. Last month, we put on the table a leaf, gas-powered leaf blower ordinance at CDC earlier, late last month. Several changes were discussed to be made to that ordinance. So I just, do we take it off the table? Or do we just leave it there for posterity?
No, because the way I'm, the way I'm looking at it is that ordinance, you're moving away from, and you're doing a new one.
Okay.
There's going to be sufficient changes to it, we're going to regard it as a new ordinance.
Okay. So it'll just sit on the table for perpetuity?
It's--
Fine with me.
Yeah.
So my, my last item would be to authorize the solicitor to amend and re-advertise the gas-powered leaf blower ordinance, taking into account the items that were raised at CDC, which I believe is 9:00 start.
It's going to be dark to 9:00 AM. No use of leaf blowers, gas-powered leaf blowers, and it'll be, I'm going to build into it a ticketing system rather than the traditional non-traffic citation where you can just hand somebody a ticket similar to a parking ticket.
And this would be empowering our code enforcement--
Code officers will be authorized to enforce--
So that takes it off of the plate of the police department?
Police, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion? If I could just add, I do want to underscore a point that Mark made last month when we were discussing this, which was essentially like, this, this issue isn't going away, what we're really just doing is taking a different approach to solving the problem, and I want to really say like this, this ordinance, that ordinance, whatever it is, ultimately, it's all in an effort to solve this health and environmental problem, and that this ordinance is constructed more solidly to address the problem than probably the previous ordinance so that, you know, council is able to hopefully, in a few moments, approve this and have a little bit more teeth and be a little bit more protective of our children. Any other discussion? All those in favor of authorizing the solicitor to amend and re-advertise the gas-powered leaf blower ordinance, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report for the evening.
Any other questions for President Pecoff?
Okay. Thank you. We now move on to Public Safety, Recreation, and the Civil Service Commission. Councilperson Kevin Boyer, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't really have a whole lot of announcements, just a reminder that on the 26th is the Halloween Parade, and Rick will be out in force, kind of helping out and volunteering and so on, so if the weather holds, it should be a nice day, so hopefully that will happen. Karen, are there still tickets left for the senior luncheon?
There are six.
Okay. Michael, did you get your ticket?
Yes.
All right, so--
Do you need a plus one?
Senior luncheon is Saturday, November 16th. I believe it's 12:02 at Spaso.
Is it Spaso?
If you haven't gotten a ticket, there's six left, you have to be six to your over and a borough resident, and have to prove that when you pick up your ticket, so.
I'll wait a bit more years.
Item number two is the approval of the speed bump pilot program. Trey and Mark and I and anyone else that has to deal with traffic and deal with safety and the public knows that speed bumps have become something that seems to maybe solve a lot of problems, or at least seemed that, and everybody wants a speed bump. So what we have done is come up with a pilot program whereby neighborhoods that want a speed bump have to follow procedure, things like getting neighborhood approval, there has to be research done on behalf of the police, we have the speed device that gathers data over a week or so. So those are all criteria that are going to go in, and then there is an application that can be accessed, so it's a little bit more formal. So now that when individuals on certain streets want a speed bump, there is a process to be followed, and if that process works, then the, then the speed bump can be put in place. There are limits, I think it's what, three in the borough, and these are temporary speed bumps, so they will be put down when it's warm and then taken down during the winter months to make room for snowplows. So I hope everybody's had a chance to look at the amended document that Brittany circulated, so I make a motion that we approve the speed bump pilot program based on the document that you've all had a chance to look at.
Motion's been made. Is there-- Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on the matter?
I just had a question, much like what was mentioned earlier about just the process of analyzing the pilot program, like.
Well, if you look there, first of all, the speed.
I just mean like, will we be revisiting the pilot program in another year? Is it two years? How do we?
We can see how it works, if it seems to work well, I'll know. If it seems to have its own little bumps in it, then, then maybe we can revise it.
That was cute.
Yeah, thank you. But anyway, it's a, a way to move forward and try to solve this blanket problem that, everyone wants a speed bump and everybody can't have a speed bump because that would just interfere with traffic. Yes, we could revisit it, but we'll see how this one works.
Okay, I mean, the name is pilot, so I just kind of.
Pilot, yes. First time we've done this.
If I may just add a little bit, I would like, because this is a pilot program, to stay very closely monitoring this program. And so, I would probably through, in the next, throughout the year, will be following up with public safety on it, just because this is new. So, I think unlike the other program, we were, the fee schedule, which we were talking about, which is very static and we've been seeing that for years, this is brand new. So, I would say it would be very, we'll be talking about this a lot in public safety over the coming year.
Great, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Any more discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the speed bump pilot program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Per Brittany's advice, we are going to table numbers three, four and five because there is still some legal issues between the borough and the representatives of the tow contract companies, so we're going to put on the back burner, they are going to come to, some of them come to public safety next week and we'll have more, so we're not going to vote on that, not tonight. Number six is to ratify the mass gathering permit for the Phillies rally bus, that happened on October 2nd when the Phillies were still in the playoffs. So, I make a motion, we ratify the mass gathering permit for the Phillies rally bus on October 2nd, 2024.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? I have a question. If we don't approve this, does that mean they get to play over?
Give it a shot, give it a redo.
I don't know if we have that kind of power.
It's true, although we do, we got, we got some connections with the Phillies.
I am a little superstitious that if they ask to come next year.
That we won't do it.
That they were just like, like, we'd, we'd love to have you, but like, ugh.
Go to Drexel.
Think of the borough as bad blood.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it wasn't us.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion beyond the silliness that we just had? If there is none, all those in favor of ratifying the mass gathering permit for the Phillies rally bus on October 2nd of this year, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number seven is to ratify the mass gathering permit for the Media Arts Council Jasper Jam Music Series. This would be October 19th, which I believe is the Saturday, from 7:00 to 10, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on the lawn outside of the community center. We did discuss this, I believe in public safety and there wasn't an issue, so I move we ratify the mass gathering permit.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for Media Arts Council Jasper Jam Music Series on October 19th, 2024, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on the lawn outside of the community center, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number eight is the mass gathering permit for Second Baptist Church's Outdoor Festival for Kids. This is on the same Saturday as the Halloween Parade, but it involves Manchester Road right by where the church is between, so it would be State Baltimore Pike. They also are going to use the, what I call the Rotary Park, which is the little park on Manchester. So, I move we approve the mass gathering permit for Second Baptist Church's Outdoor Festival for Kids on Saturday, the 26th, from 9:00 until 4:00.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for Second Baptist Church's Outdoor Festival for Kids to be held Saturday, October 26th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And I am happy to recommend that we ratify or pass the mass gathering permit for the Annual Veterans Day Parade, which will be on November 11th, starting at 11:11, from 11:11 till 1:00 PM. I make that in a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Um, has not been seconded, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
I'm jumping ahead of myself there. Motion has now been made and seconded, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for Veterans Day Parade to be held November 11th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, I'm sorry, from 11:11 AM to 1:00 PM, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And then the last item, number 10, this is to amend the mass gathering permit for the Media Farmer's Market. In December, they go into their winter mode, which is they meet the first and third Sundays of each month. However, because of the holiday weekend, Thanksgiving is late, their first Sunday would be December 1st, which would fall kind of during the Thanksgiving weekend. So, they had asked that we move that back a week and instead of the, the first and the, what would that be, the 16th, they do the, the 8th and the 22nd, so I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the matter? I will simply say that this was the result of a request by the farmer's market to do that because of the holiday weekend, and I think it's, it's great that they're, you know, thinking about making sure that our businesses are going to be visited on, on that weekend. All in favor of approving the amendment for the mass gathering permit application for Media Farmer's Market to adjust their December dates to December 8th and 22nd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Boyer? Hearing none, we'll move on to Personnel, Environmental Advisory Council and Library. Councilperson Lisa Gelman, Ms. Gelman.
Thank you, President. Pekoff. I do have one announcement for the library, and that is that this weekend is the Fall Book Sale, so everybody should come out and support the library and buy some books, beginning 10:00 AM on Saturday, and it continues on Sunday as well as Monday. And those are my announcements. My first legislative item is to approve the hiring of Alexandra Garrett for the position of Special Projects Coordinator. We are very excited to have Al, Alex? Ally, I know, sure, Ally come on board. She's going to be part-time until the end of the year and then her position becomes full-time January. Do you want to speak to any more?
We, yeah, we are very excited to have her on board, she has a master's in public administration, well, she's finishing it up over the next two months, which is why she'll be part-time until it's full-time. And then she's had wonderful internships in government, experience with grant writing. She seems like a very capable and competent and nice young lady, so we're very, very excited to have her on board.
Thrilled. Okay, so, I would like to approve the hiring of Alexandra Garrett for the position of Special Projects Coordinator. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
When is the start date?
November 4th.
November 4th, okay, great, thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the hiring of Alexandra Garrett for the position of Special Projects Coordinator, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Second item is the approval of the promotion of Lieutenant John McCormick to Police Chief effective November 1st, 2024. While we are sad to see our chief retire, we are thrilled to be able to promote Lieutenant John McCormick to Police Chief. And as a little background, I wanted to give a little information about Mr. Lieutenant McCormick. He has been a lifelong Delaware County resident, he has been with the media police for 22 years, 23 in January. He served four years in the United States Air Force, he started emergency services at age 16 with his local volunteer fire company. He did obtain a Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice from St. Joseph's University. While with the media police, he was promoted to sergeant in April of 2019, promoted to lieutenant in June 2023. He was, has been in charge of training for the department, he's been supervisor of detectives and patrol sergeants, he was extremely key in our police department, obtaining the accreditation status. Whereas I learned that out of 1,207 police departments in Pennsylvania, only 167 are accredited law enforcement agencies, so we are extremely thrilled to have him here. And he also has two great kids, so we're thrilled to be able to promote Lieutenant John McCormick to Police Chief effective November 1st, 2024, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion of the matter? I'd simply like to say that I'm very proud of our council for listening to our department. I'm very proud of our department for being so cohesive and supportive of one another and really stepping up to keep it moving forward. I, I think it's one of our proudest, proudest things in, in this borough was our police department. As Chief Egan said, as he was retiring, you know, we're, we're sort of the, the gold standard for a lot of other communities, and I don't want to get into specifics of what is happening in other places, but the media police department is, is absolutely one of the strong suits that we should be very proud of. And I thank all of you for your part in that process. That really helped us be open about what was going on. We didn't really want to tell everybody as it was going on, but, you know, looking back on it, I just wanted to say thank you to the council for, for being willing to listen and being open-minded to keeping it in-house. So, the motion's been made and seconded, and I just made some comments. All those in favor of approving the promotion of Lieutenant John McCormick to Police Chief effective November 1st, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
I will say exactly what you were saying, it did make our decision-making process pretty easy, once we were able to speak to a lot of the individuals in the police department. I'm thrilled to have them here.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, I think it speaks not only to the police department, but to the willingness of our council and our residents, frankly, to talk to our police officers and to get a sense of what's going on, and that was great, but thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And are there any other questions for Councilperson Gelman? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Shade Tree Commission, Councilmember Jen Malcoon, Ms. Malcoon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I don't have any announcements.
Okay. Are there any questions for Councilmember Malcoon?